Good afternoon and welcome to a regular workshop meeting of the Oak Harbor City Council. Today is Wednesday, August 22nd, and it is 2:00 PM. I know we have one counselor that's on his way here, that would be Mr. Oenberg, and I believe that we have heard that Mr. Wiesner and Ms. Wessinger will not be with us today. So, I'm Bob Severance, Mayor, and we'll just go around the table here to introduce those at the table now.
Joel Servadia, City Council.
Bill Larson, City Council.
Tara Heisen, City Council.
Elena Warren, City Administrator.
Beth Mans, Mayor for Tim.
Thank you. We do have a full schedule today, scheduled to end at 4:55, so I'm gonna try to keep us on schedule with the times that are going on in the agenda. At this time, I'd like to introduce Emma House, our Human Resource Director, and I think she's got some introductions to make for new employees. Come on.
Good afternoon, Mayor, good afternoon, Council. We do have a group of new employees that we've hired over the summer. We're missing two from your agenda packet that are at CDL training today, but I would like to go ahead and allow our new employees to introduce themselves, let you know their names and where they're currently working.
Okay, my name's Ralph Schraubholzer, and I'm a Level One Operator at the New Clean Water Facility. I'm really excited about it. It's a great, I agree, fun.
I'm Josh, I'm one of your garbage men.
I'm Corey Crusia, Monday was my first day. I'm a new operator too at the Clean Water Facility with Ralph.
I'm Eddie Darian, Waste Water Collection Storm Dr.
Thank you all, and welcome to Public Health. Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And I think at this time then we'll go to the next item, which is Administration, Island County Services Discussion. And I think we've got some people here from Island County. Jackie Henderson, why don't you come on up here?
Keith Igman is gonna go first.
Are you by yourself here?
Well, Keith, Keith Igman is gonna be here.
Oh.
Just take a seat.
But I will, Keith is gonna go first, but I guess I'll...
Just take a seat and tell us about your vacation while you're away. She went through there. Oh, you're going.
Well, there he is. Oh, phew.
Well, you can sit there.
I'll sit here, but you can sit there. Come on. So, I hadn't started yet.
Thank you.
So, I'll let you introduce yourselves and your faculty. Welcome.
Go ahead, I hadn't started, so...
Great, thank you for having us. I was told it was 2:10, I apologize for my last minute entrance. My name's Keith Igman, I'm the Director of the Island County Public Health Department.
And I'm Jackie Henderson, I'm Director of Island County Human Services Department.
So, may I just get started, Mayor?
Sure, yeah, please.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing us time to chat with you today. What we're here today to accomplish, hopefully, is to talk to you about programs and services that are delivered by Island County Government, specifically from the two departments that we represent for Island County. One of the things that is a bit unique about the work that we do is that our work is not limited by jurisdictional lines. So, my department is the Health Department for the City of Oak Harbor. Jackie's department also provides human services-related programs and services to Oak Harbor residents. We've always been looking for a greater opportunity to partner with the city. We do the same with Langley and Coopville. We provide a lot of support for Freeland, since they're not incorporated, but they kind of act like a little city on the south end. We don't have any incorporated areas in Comeno Island, so all that territory is just unincorporated Island County. So, what we thought we could do today is we both created sort of one-pager identifying the programs and services that we deliver, limited in some cases to certain populations of individuals. The purpose of sharing this information with you is to help you understand the breadth of what it is we do. Thank you. So, what we thought we'd do in terms of format, if it's okay with the Council, is I'm gonna run through the information that I've brought forward here to you today, and then Jackie can do the same, and then we'll leave plenty of time at the end of what I hope is a fairly short presentation on our part to enter into some dialogue with Council members and the Mayor and the Administrator about opportunities that you might think we can create together to better serve our population of individuals that choose this beautiful place to call home. So, in terms of public health services, the majority of activities that we involve ourselves in are either driven by either Washington State Legislature rules, statutes, and administrative rules, and/or rules that are developed by the Washington State Board of Health. The State Board of Health is the longest-standing board in state government, established in the late 1800s, and the premise of the State Board is to adopt rules to protect the health of the population, mostly in ways where services can only be delivered at a population level. Much of what we do has a regulatory flavor to it. We regulate behavior and activity, in many cases, business activity. The State Board of Health then delegates, or the Legislature delegates authority to implement programs and services at the local level through a health officer. So, we're obligated by statute to have an M.D. or a D.O., either on staff or as a contract employee, in our case, county contracts with Dr. Brad Thomas. He's a retired family practice physician out of Seattle, great guy. His primary role is to address issues related to the delivery of a medical service. So, if we are advising a client about their exposure to a specific disease, that's not something I'm gonna do because I'm not a licensed physician. We're gonna have a medical professional be that interface between a member of the public and the health officer. At the local level, the State, the County Board of Health oversees the policy setting for all the work that we do. We have an expanded Board of Health, it's not always that way in counties across the state. Many counties, the local Board of Health is just three county commissioners. In our county, our Board of Health is expanded, and the Mayor of Oak Harbor has a seat on the Board of Health. A would-be health commissioner has a seat on the Board of Health, and then the commanding officer of the Naval Hospital also has a non-voting seat on the Board of Health. And so, we receive our policy direction from our Board of Health. Our Board of County Commissioners is our fiduciary agent, so the county commissioners set our budget in terms of how we spend money. So, in terms of public health services, we separate them into three primary functions within our department. One of our sections of our department, which happens to be the smallest, we've got three individuals in this section, really their primary role is assessing the health of the population. So, we, at some regularity, we're on about a five-year cycle now, at some regularity, we look at data, lots of data. It's hospitalization data, it's morbidity and mortality data, disease and death data, it's healthy youth survey data delivered through our public school system, lots of information about what is causing our constituency to either be healthy or unhealthy, and we readjust what we do in terms of programs and services to address those populations or sub-populations that are suffering from a greater burden of disease or disability. And that process takes a lot of time and effort, it's a community-driven process. We have a, our Board of Health has a Community Health Advisory Board, a number of volunteers that sit on the board and provide us guidance in terms of evaluating that data. That data results in the development of a Community Health Assessment, which is really a presentation of the data to the, to the public and policymakers about how healthy is our population. We typically compare it to state averages and national averages, is a typical way that's done. And then, following the Community Health Assessment, we develop with the community a Community Health Improvement Plan, and it's not the county's plan, it's the community's plan. And that last, the last iteration of that plan was finalized about a year and a half ago, and it identified four primary areas where we can do better in terms of investing resources in serving our population. Housing, depression and suicide, interpersonal abuse, and access to care are the top four priority areas, and then we have sub-priorities under those areas in terms of improving the health of the population. We also...
Keith, can you repeat this more?
Yeah, housing, depression and suicide, interpersonal abuse, and access to care. And access to care is not necessarily, "I need access to a doctor." It could be, "I'm in need of mental health services." It could be, "My four-year-old needs access to a dentist that will accept Medicaid." It's very broad in terms of access, the word access. In that section of the Health Department, we also run a fairly small program called the Healthy Youth Scholarship Program. We partner with the South Woodby Park and Recs District, the North Woodby Park and Recs Districts to solicit donations from community members and institutions, and then those donations help youth who are income-eligible to participate in physical activity that they wouldn't have otherwise because of the lack of financial capacity, so they pay whatever the fees are to participate in a, in a high school sport, or they wanna take sailing lessons through the Sailing Club here in Oak Harbor. And those scholarships are provided to allow youth to do that. We also run a SNAP Ed program. SNAP is food stamps, Ed is education, so we're not on the food stamp end of the game. We participate in two elementary schools along with WSU Extension Office in Oak Harbor to run school-based garden programs, and our shtick as the Health Department is the nutrition piece. It also teaches kids how to grow their own food. We have funds available to us to invest in marijuana and tobacco prevention. We are rebuilding our system along with our human service partners to make sure that those investments, along with resources they have, are invested in the right place. Second area within public health, in terms of services we provide, we are the office where all birth and death certificates are issued for Island County residents. We manage that system, and it's more than just the issuance of birth and death certificates. Those of you that have been through the death of a family member and have to notify all the organizations and insurance companies of that, of that passing, get multiple copies of those death certificates to provide during that process. There's also a process in this state involving our office where you need to get appropriate permits to bury or cremate a person, and that process is one that requires us to be there and available and timely because of the need to expedite that process. A lot of work we do in what we call maternal and child health, it's support of families, it's support of pregnant moms before and after delivery. Most of our maternal and child health services are delivered to an income-eligible population, so you've gotta fall somewhere within the income eligibility spectrum to receive those services. We run WIC clinics on South Woodby, Oak Harbor, and on Comeno Island. Navy also has their own WIC clinic that's on base. Between the two clinics, we serve about 1,700 individuals. The purpose of the WIC program is not only to provide supplemental nutrition coupons for families, but also interact with mothers and children and refer them into other programs where they may also need services. Those two programs result in about $1.7 million of federal money spent in our local grocery stores as well. We have a nurse that is available to conduct home visits for families that are in need of home visiting services, could be an underweight baby, could be a mom with developmental disabilities, could be children with special healthcare needs that require some attention that lasts beyond just the hospital. We have developed a new partnership with Toddler Learning Center where we're providing some of the nursing support services to them. They don't have a high enough need to have their own nurse, so we're using some of our federal maternal child health block grant dollars to help provide that service to TLC. One book of business that I think the public expects somebody's doing, but they don't know what, who is doing it, there is a set of health conditions, typically diseases, that the State Board of Health requires that the presence of that individual and that disease be reported to the Health Department, and we do follow-up. And the follow-up we do is either making sure that that individual with that disease is connected to a medical home, in some cases, it's partner notification of a disease that could have been spread to somebody, somebody else, and they don't know about it. You typically don't hear about the services we have until there's an outbreak. Our last big outbreak was pertussis on South Woodby in 2008. We monitor for the presence of individuals with active tuberculosis and ensure they're cared for, and interestingly enough, the county is on the hook to pay for diagnosis, treatment, and case management for individuals with tuberculosis that can't pay for it themselves. So, right now, we have a patient who we're actually paying for their motel because they don't have an alternative place to live. We participate in a program that we call Harm Reduction. It's really a needle exchange program, delivered in a number of case, places across the county. The intention is to reduce the spread of communicable diseases through sharing of needles. We serve a role in the county's emergency preparedness functions, whether it's police, fire, or Department of Emergency Management run by the county. Our health officer has a seat in the Emergency Operations Center should there be a disaster or an outbreak or something that happens that requires medical attention and oversight. Doing good time. And then, the third and largest of the services that we're involved in, in terms of public health, the one that has the most regulatory oversight, the Food Inspector works for us, the Food Inspectors. It's all places that serve food to the public are required to be permitted and follow State Board rules as it relates to the preparation, storage, and serving of food. We have almost 400 food service establishments throughout Island County. The highest density of those is in Oak Harbor. We have a shellfish program designed to educate the public on where they should or shouldn't collect and consume shellfish on the 204 miles of shoreline that make up all of Island County. We have a drinking water program, primarily looking at the quality of drinking water in small public water systems. Big public water systems are regulated at the State Department of Health. We are the issuer, the reviewers and issuers of permits to install onsite septic systems on property, and while people are not installing onsite septic systems in the City of Oak Harbor, there are still over 200 active operational septic systems within the boundaries of Oak Harbor, and one of the responsibilities that we have is working with homeowners to ensure that those systems are being inspected at some regularity, reported to our office, and then we follow up on problems that are identified during those inspections. We regulate the flow of garbage through the community, haulers, disposal. Our Public Works Department has lots and lots of employees that work to manage solid waste. Our role is really in how facilities are operated, transfer stations, storage, and how people contain garbage on their own private property as well. We have a role when properties have been identified as being an illicit drug manufacturing facility, a meth lab. We haven't seen a lot of that activity in our community, thank goodness, in a while, and our job really is to identify and recognize if there's been contamination of a, of a vehicle, a house, a mobile home where drugs have been manufactured, and if there is contamination, we file documents against the title of the property that require it to be cleaned up before someone can reoccupy the residence. We monitor the quality of water at swim beaches around the county, including City Beach. We have a surface water quality monitoring program where we're monitoring streams, primarily streams, all across Island County, some flowing into cities, some flowing out of cities. Really, the purpose of that program, one is shellfish protection, the other is to defend the county's critical areas, regulations as they pertain to the protection of streams. That water quality program generates a lot of useful information for other programs that we operate under. We've had a hydrogeologist on staff. A hydrogeologist is a scientist that studies groundwater since 1996. He is well-known nationally and internationally for his work in understanding seawater intrusion and the effect of extracting groundwater on an island, does a lot of work with other community members and jurisdictions, and is available. I've heard rumor that the city is contemplating utilizing your in-town wells a bit more, potentially, than your surface water source. If that is so, and you need a scientist to help guide you through some of that decision-making process, he would be made available to you at your, at our expense. Zoonotic diseases, those are diseases spread between bugs or animals and humans. So, we get a lot of calls about rat problems, or mosquito problems, or West Nile virus, or those bad things that we get when we come into contact with some bugs. We have a couple of additional programs that are non-traditional health, public health programs that, that we manage. We have a role in the Puget Sound Recovery Effort and have resources available to support stormwater control systems, habitat protection projects, work that might benefit the city. We are responsible for Island County's role in salmon recovery efforts statewide, and just took on recently the county's noxious weed program, which are laws that guide and assign responsibility to property owners to control certain invasive species that have been deemed to be Class A and B hazards across the state. That's it for my list. I did pretty good timing, I think. So, I'll turn it over to Jackie now.
Okay, well, I'll pass these out. Thank you from me too for having us. It's exciting for me to tell you about some of the programs, or all of the programs that are done out of the Island County Human Services Department. When you get this, you'll see that I have, next to some of the programs, I have an M in parentheses, and that means it is a mandated program that the county has, if we don't provide this program, the state or whoever it's mandated from will find somebody who will, find somebody else who will. And then, I've also put next to the different programs where, how they're funded, and a lot of them have a lot of different funding. All of our programs, except for one, are provided in the entire county. One of the programs, in fact, is just here in Oak Harbor, and that's the program that Tara Heisen runs, which is the first one listed on here. It's our Community Wellness and Prevention Initiative. It's state funds, I think it's originally federal funds, but they come to the state and then to the counties. So, this provides staffing and support to the Oak Harbor Youth Coalition, and they're doing all kinds of work within the school and the community to, to help, help families and young people avoid going down the route of drugs and alcohol. She certainly could tell you a lot more about that program. The second one on here is the Early Child Behavioral Health and Parent Support Program. This is local funds. This is funded by our 1/10th of 1% sales tax. Several years ago, now, man, 12, 13 years ago, the then-county commissioners passed the, passed the initiative that we would collect more sales tax, and 1/10th of 1% would go to mental health and substance use disorder programs. We were the third county in the state to pass that tax, and so, we have a number of programs in our department that, that are funded by that, as well as the therapeutic courts out of Juvenile Superior Court offices, our drug court programs are, and those are funded out of that same pot of money. So, the Early Childhood Behavioral Health and Parent Support Program is a, is a program that supports infant and early childhood behavioral health by focusing on early intervention, parenting, attachment, and social-emotional relationships. The staff in this program work very closely with the staff in the public health program where they do more of the medical, nursing kind of side, and we do more of the social-emotional and behavioral health side. So, our staff in this program, we have one and a half staff, and they, they do home visits. Almost all their work is done in the homes. Our referrals come actually from the Health Department, they come from pediatricians, they come from daycare centers, wherever they feel there's an issue primarily with the family about providing the kinds of, social-emotional kinds of things that kids need to grow up strong and healthy, and so, our staff will go in and actually provide some pretty good support to families, including one-on-one parenting kinds of things. They'll also help families get kids connected to daycares, preschools, and those kinds of things. Also funded with a 1/10th is we have a full-time behavioral, behavioral health specialist in the jail who provides both crisis intervention and brief treatment for people with mental illness and/or substance use disorder issues. She will help, she'll bring in people if we need to get particular assessments done that she can't do, she brings those folks in to the jail. We also have a jail transition services position that is just part-time, that is funded with some state funds, and that person provides services to individuals with behavioral health issues who are getting ready to be discharged from jail, and helps connect them to the community services they need. We could use about three more people in that program just because, you know, a big, a big part of folks returning to jail is that they aren't able to connect to services once they get out to jail, that they, out of jail that they need, and so, we do our best to try to, try to do that with a part-time person. What would be nice is if they could follow them up when they get into the community, and so, to make sure they're keeping those appointments and those kinds of things. We have an opioid outreach program. This is, this is fairly new, a little over a year old, really excited about this because it truly is a collaboratively-funded program. There's some state money that has gone into it, there's some local funds, and then there's funds, funds from a managed care organization called Amer Group. So, my department hires the opioid outreach worker, and the, the funding from this, the state funds part of that position, and then the funding from the Amer Group organization funds part, a part-time public health nurse. So, we, we have, we have law enforcement, which is really funded by the county, law enforcement, and then the opioid outreach worker who's a, he has both training in mental health and chemical dependency, and then the public health nurse. So, what they do, we started the program on South Woodby and Comeno, and they go out with law enforcement, because usually it's law enforcement that knows where people are and what they need, and so, they go out with them, we make contact, and it's, the long-term goal is obviously to get people into treatment, but often people are resistance, resistant to that when we make that first contact. So, what our outreach worker tries to do is really just to form a relationship with that person and to find out what barriers there are for them to get into treatment, and we all know what a lot of those are. Some of them are housing, some of them are... And we all know what a lot of those are, some of them are housing, some of them are some kind of medical help they need, a number of different things. Sometimes it's issues with law enforcement that they're afraid will come to the surface, so we try to work through all those things. You know, we're seeing, we're certainly seeing some success in getting people, some of the needs, some of their needs met, and hopefully, ultimately, they will say, yes, I'm ready for treatment. So, the public health nurse comes in when we find that there's some medical issues that need to be addressed, because often with this population there are, and so, the public nurse, public health nurse will come in and try to address those, again, giving them connected to a physician or whatever it is they need. Our outreach worker also works very closely with the needle exchange program and often is at the site of the needle exchange when they're doing that, and so can make that contact there also. And I'd be happy for, on any of these, I did not put data next to them, like how many people we're serving, but I'm certainly happy to get you some of that information if you'd like it. Our outreach behavioral health services, that's another program funded with our one-tenth of one percent money. We have two mental health clinicians, one who also is a chemical dependency, chemical dependency professional, and then we have two case managers who work in that program. And what we, the purpose of that really started way back, and it was really from law enforcement for those people that were chronic nine-one-one callers, where law enforcement would go out again and again and again, and it clearly wasn't a legal issue, it was a mental health issue. And so, our first, the first couple of years we ran the program, most of our referrals were from law enforcement, and what we would do is send a clinician or a case manager out with law enforcement to make contact with that person, and then to try to engage them in mental health services or chemical dependency treatment services. The ultimate goal, getting, to get them set up with, to community services. So, our program was meant to be short-term. Now, it's gone beyond, we still get probably most of our referrals from law enforcement, but we also get referrals from other county departments, from neighbors of people, from senior services, from all kinds of other organizations in the community. I do know that right now, through that program, they're seeing eighty-one people, and there's quite a, we have quite a list of people waiting. There are a number of people in our community who just, who are eligible for many of our publicly-funded services, but they just aren't going to go. They're not going to go into a place to get those services. So, what we do with this particular program is we go out to where they are, wherever, pretty much they'll see us. We do take law enforcement with us sometimes if we feel that that's necessary. But we will, we will pretty much meet people anyplace. I have a funny story of one of our clinicians who came into my office one day, and she said, you know, Jackie, I've had this lady who I've been trying to see and trying to see and trying to see, and she never, she doesn't want me to come to her home, we never, we never can agree on a place to meet. And she said, but, she told me today she'd meet me at Oak Harbor, at the Oak Harbor Tavern, and she said, can I go there? And I said, sure, just don't park the county car in front of the tavern. So, she went, and they, you know, it turned out to be very successful. They met there two or three times, then moved to Starbucks, and eventually she did get the woman into some community services. If, I think if I, if I had a choice of expanding any of our one-tenth programs, that would be the one I would expand, because I think we could get a lot more people into treatment. If we could get out there where they're at and make that contact. Another program funded by the one-tenth of one percent program money is the School-Based Behavioral Health Counselors. We have, we have folks in all four school districts in the county, we have three in the Oak Harbor School District. This is primarily funded with the one-tenth, although Southwoodby really wanted to, we had, we had one and a half people there, and they wanted the half-person to go full-time, so they're paying, contracting with us to have that person work there full-time. So, again, the purpose of this program is really to provide brief behavioral health intervention and treatment to students and their families, and assist them into getting the community services they need. They also work very closely with the teachers, they become kind of tutors for the teachers, or when teachers are having a particular issue with certain students, can come in and give them some clues on to what to do. They do a lot of suicide recognition with the school staffs, just, just kind of, we, this is probably one of the programs I appreciate our relationship so much with the school districts. It's truly a collaborative relationship, we meet with them on a regular basis. The program looks a little different in each school district, and that's because we really, we really create it to work in that school district. Referrals are different in every district. So, we have two meetings a year, more if we need it, with the school district, and there's a team of people, the superintendent, some of our staff, the principals, and maybe other counselors that are in the schools. And we tweak it a little bit every year. Right now in Oak Harbor, we have one, one full-time person at the high school, and then the other two are, each have two schools, sometimes two elementary, sometimes somebody will be on a middle in an elementary school. We also have, we have one, and we're going to be having another student support advocate. And when Keith mentioned about the marijuana tax money that we get, that's how we support this particular position. And right now, the one person we have is working in the alternative schools in the county, and this, this particular person is also both a mental health professional and a chemical dependency professional. So, we just are going to combine our money now that we're getting, so we know we're going to be able to have another full-time person in that position. So, that's, that's pretty exciting. In fact, we're excited with this program because she, Claire is her name, who works in, is our student support advocate, and she, in Coopville at the Dan, which I think a lot of Oak Harbor students also go to, it's the alternative program down there, it's also the juvenile court uses it also for their kids that are in court and need to keep going to school. And they've been asked to do a presentation at a national conference in North Carolina this fall. So, Claire and the folks from the school and juvenile court will all be going to that conference. So, that's the behavioral health programs. Programs are developmental disabilities programs, and I'm going to pass this out also because I could have brought you a lot of handouts, but this I thought you would really enjoy. The first program I want to talk to you about is our Supported Employment Program. This is for adults with developmental disabilities over the age of twenty-one. And the services, in this particular case, we contract out these services to agencies, to several different agencies, and they, they find and support people with developmental disabilities in jobs in the community. And this is a list of all the businesses in Island County that, that employ people with disabilities. It's a little out of date, Mike said it was up to date as of about February, and we don't have another one out yet. But this is, our community is, has been just wonderful in how they've supported adults with developmental disabilities. We have about an eighty percent employment rate, and so, we're always shooting to go a little higher, but it's about eighty percent right now. And then our School-to-Work Program is a program we do collaboratively with all, again, all the school districts and with the Department of Vocational Rehabilitation. So, with folks with developmental disabilities, school districts are responsible for them from age three to twenty-one. And, but when they're eighteen to twenty-one, they're supposed to be on this track to teach employment skills, adult daily living skills, and those kinds of things. So, we've got, we've, like I said, have this great partnership with all three school districts, funded with, funded by the school districts, some county money, and then some state money to get kids in that age category who are developmentally disabled, employed by the time they graduate at age twenty-one, so then it's just a smooth transition into county services. And for the last three, four years, we have had a hundred percent of the students who are graduating are employed. And the Oak Harbor School District has just been a real leader in that, and it's, we're very excited, we're the only county in the state that has a hundred percent employment rate in our School-to-Work Program. Very excited about that. So, our Early Childhood Program, that's also a mandated program, that's, Keith mentioned Toddler Learning Center, and I know you all know of Toddler Learning Center, we are their primary funder. They just, this month, hit the hundred, hundred mark. They are now providing services to a hundred kids from all over the, from, just, we have a different contract on Cameno, but it's a, it's a lot of kids. We are their primary funder, although they do get some money from the school district, they also do a lot of fundraising, and then they also are able to bill insurance. So, it's one of those programs where they're constantly patching, patching things together to try to, try to keep going. We also have a parent-to-parent program, which is funded with local and state funds, and this is, this is a great program for families who have, families who have children with special needs. It's a lot of information and assistance to those families, as well as a lot of good support and, and education for those families. We operate the Housing Support Center for the county, this is a mandate from a couple of years ago, when the state said, instead of people who are either homeless or at risk of being homeless, instead of them going to a number of different agencies and being, being told, well, we can't help you go over there, or we can't help you go over there, they said communities need, counties need to have one point of entry, and then that point of entry sends people out to the appropriate housing. So, we are that Housing Support Center, and so, so now, if somebody goes to the Housing Authority or to Opportunity Council, they'll be, they're sent there, and then, and then we work with all of those agencies to connect people to the most appropriate agency, whether it's CADA or, or any number of other agents, or organizations that provide housing. The nice thing about this program is we also are able to provide some case management services for people that come in, so if somebody comes in and maybe they're at risk of going to lose their housing, we can, we can often patch things together for them for a while to give them some more time to look for something, but we may also see, or they may say, they need some mental health help, or they need some help accessing medical services, or some of those other issues, we can, we can help with that. We've been now operating that about two years and have seen over a thousand households. So, our Veterans Program, we operate a Veterans Assistance Fund, which provides emergency assistance to eligible veterans and their dependents. This is for indigent veterans primarily, if they need temporary help for food, for rent, for gas, to continue to get to work. We can help with getting veterans connected to other veteran services that they may not know about, or they may not know how to access. We were just working this, this morning with the widow of a veteran who had no idea how now to apply for the services, services she might be eligible for, so our, our veterans' person was going out to see her and to help her do that. A couple of things that aren't on here, but I wanted to mention, one is that the county provides funding to Island Senior Resources to help with information and assistance and Meals on Wheels, and that funding goes through us, we're kind of the pass-through for that, but that goes to, that's for the entire, entire county. Another thing we're really excited about is a program that we haven't started yet, but we have heard that we are getting the grant, and I've been working with Chief Dresker on this, is embedded social workers with our law enforcement officers. Some of you may have heard about those programs around the country where we have a social worker who goes with law enforcement, especially to those areas where we know people need some help and assistance, and so, more to come on that. We'll be getting two positions in that area, one will work part-time with Oak Harbor PD and part-time with the Sheriff's Office. So, we've been meeting with all of them, and Oak Harbor said, we like them better, and they want the full-time one, and the Sheriff's Office told me the same thing. Yeah. Anyway, we're really excited, we're excited about that, we're just waiting for the contract to come. And then the other position we have for that will be more of an outreach, another outreach worker case manager type person to work in the communities. I think that's it.
So, we were hoping that you might have some questions or comments, or things you might want to learn more about, opportunities you've been thinking about, where dots could be connected in terms of shared resources. Any input you might have for us?
I'd like, on that topic, I'd like to hear from department heads, if, after viewing this presentation, if there's any department heads in the city that heard something that they might be able to partner with or make use of. Really, I, you know, we're not here every day doing the nitty-gritty, so I would like to hear from staff if they see an opportunity, because there are a number of them, and I'm so stoked to hear about the Embedded Social Worker Program, it's the first time hearing about this. I, I do want to give a plug for, give you guys a real-life example of some partnerships, and this is not even an official one, but I share an office with our opioid outreach person, who does a lot of work on Cameno, and a lot of work on Southwoodby, and with the Sheriff's Office, not so much here in Oak Harbor yet.
Yep.
Yet. And this morning, he got a call from the OHPD about an individual that's known to, to both agencies, and they said, you know, we have a warrant, we have to go pick this person up, but they also knew that this person was in like mid-assessment for being on a path to treatment and help, and they knew that that would disrupt that process. So, they called Dennis and said, we have to go pick this guy up, where is he, how can we do this in the way that would disrupt this the least, because you don't want to throw that whole thing off and get this guy right back where he started. And, you know, he, it's disappointing that this is being, that those are the circumstances, but I was so happy that I got to be there to hear that phone call, because the fact that OHPD, and, you know, everyone's aware of the group of people and where they are in a process, even though there's not an official partnership, and that they have the foresight to call and say, you know, where are we, you know, how can we make this transition easier for this person? Just, it shows a lot of compassion and a lot of teamwork, and I was just delighted to hear that today.
I was just talking about that.
Oh, are you? I was trying to be as generic as I could, but thank you, you guys are on. And I know Dennis really appreciated that phone call. I, I'm very interested in the hydrologist. I think we all might be. But in terms of partnerships, I, I think the appropriate people to ask would be staff, honestly, to summarize.
So, we certainly have staff in attendance here, and I would invite any to join in with questions or input.
And we'd be happy to respond to any comments or questions. Oh, sorry, the formality of your meeting, we're hoping to, and we came here in, out of respect for your chain of command as well, so work with your staff regularly.
Mayor, can I just, real quick, say something about the grant? I know less than more Harvard PD are appreciative of you of getting the grant, but there was another one we were looking at, we didn't go for that, because we, they had this one, and we want to see how this goes. So, working out the details of how it's going to work is exciting for us to see where that can go, so we appreciate that partnership. And I think we have a true legitimate partnership as far as first responder type of stuff, so appreciate that.
We really do, and I, this is a shout-out for all of the law enforcement, I don't know that I've ever worked with a more compassionate group of men and women than in all of our law enforcement agencies in the county. Those kind of calls are not unusual, we get a lot of them, where they don't want to just take somebody and lock, lock them up, they do, well, you know the number of people that get dropped off at our office by law enforcement, because they don't want to take them to jail, you know, they want us to, I mean, sometimes they might be dumping them, but I'm just But they, but they do want what's best for the person, and they know that most times it's not locking them up, so.
So, I know that the state does some tracking of shellfish, and they have a website where they, where their grow areas are sometimes closed down.
Yeah. I, you know, at some point in time, technology is going to, is going to take our book of business away from us. Most of the resources that you need, or our constituency needs as consumers, they have access to. So, you can look for up-to-date closures for certain shellfish areas. All of the data that our hydrogeologist has generated is now available on a user-friendly website. You can pull up well stratigraphy, find out what the pump rate on your well is, find out what the last chemistry data was from that well. And we're trying to get better at providing public access. The air advisory information was put on our website, and it existed before, we just pointed to it. And so, a lot of that public information, it's about educating the public on how to navigate to get that information. Restaurant inspections will soon be available for all of our facilities in Island County, thanks to one of our commissioners. So, we're continuing to try to pump more of that information through self-consumption means rather than having to pick up a phone and call.
The county that I grew up in, apparently the paper down there has access to that, and then they publish the restaurant information in the paper, so. and then they publish the restaurant information in the paper, so you can tell-
We'll have to figure out what they want to do with the information once it's provided.
So, how often do you inspect?
Depends upon the facility. So, if it's considered a high-risk facility, it's twice per year. If it's a low risk, it's once per year. If you do a festival, we'll inspect you the day that you participate in that festival. I've got about five staff that do food safety inspections. The good news is, you know, most food establishment's are as interested in their, in their customer's health as they are the quality of the service in their business. So, it's more of a matter of just reminding individuals of certain techniques that limit the growth of foodborne bacteria, that sort of thing. Most frequently, it's twice per year.
Were you asking about the shellfish for a friend?
Just curious, just curious.
He enjoys their bits, so. I see a good partnership opportunity in terms of letting people know that those resources are available to go and check online for air quality, water quality, well, all that stuff. I did not know you could do that, so I think that would be a great opportunity for the city to help spread the word. Channel 10?
We, we're gonna, for the benefit of the mayor and the council, we're going to have an upcoming Board of Health meeting where we talk, sharing with the board, sort of a culmination of resources that are available electronically. And we'll make sure we do that in a format with the mayor and bring it back to the council, and then you can figure out how you want to use that to share with your constituencies. I think there are things, I think there are investments we've made that we haven't shared with our Board of Health yet. So, we'll make sure we pass that along to the mayor, that'll be later this fall.
One of the other things I just wanted to, and I meant to mention it under behavioral health, is I know there's a, people who are pretty gravely mentally ill, they're a lot more visible these days than they have been in the past. And I know I get a lot of calls from people about, "Why can't you do something? Why can't you do something?" And I think with all of our programs and supporting other community organizations that are trying to deal with a lot of the issues, they're all voluntary. So, all of our, all of our programs are voluntary. We have a lot of methods and ways we can try to engage people in services, but if they say no, that's kind of it. I mean, we may, we'll go back, and that's one thing with our opioid outreach worker, he's really good about, if he makes that first contact and they say, "Don't want anything, goodbye", he'll leave them their card, his card, and then he might wait a week or two, but he'll always go back. And it's just kind of a matter of continuing to try and maybe trying different ways. But I, there's oftentimes, I know I wish there was something we could absolutely do, a way we could force people into treatment, and we see that they need it so desperately, but we only have so many tools in our toolbox, and we do the best we can to try to get people into treatment.
So, is the Harbor Haven still the only shelter, overnight shelter?
There's a, there's a small shelter at On Langley-
There is now?
It's run by the same organization. But primarily, it's families, down there, they might take singles, but currently, that's it.
Any other?
We wanted to thank you again for allowing us to talk generally. And are willing to come back and share with you and chat with you and talk with you anytime, it would be beneficial to you.
And even to just collaborate, any ideas you might have, gosh, we're willing to come and talk with you on those.
Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
I was just gonna say, thanks again, I know you all have a lot of questions for your-
I don't, but I've written a lot of things down that I'm gonna go look up on your website. There's a lot of new information here, so I don't want you to think the fact that we didn't ask you a whole lot of questions, there's a lot of blue on here that basically is indicating I've got some homework to do. So, thank you both for the information.
Okay. We will move on, we're just a little bit ahead of our schedule here, which is great. Our next item is our Legal Department, Title V Structure Update. We've got our, we have our city attorney.
I will sit down with Ms. Anna here today, just so she doesn't get this with you. That's always my type of sidekick. Mayor and members of council, the Legal Department is just thrilled to share with you the latest news we have on Title V, our business licenses and regulations. See if I get my slides going for y'all. So, Title V, this is our, generally, it regulates our general business licenses, regulatory endorsements and permits. So, for some time now, we've needed to do some code updates to Title V. I noticed these updates were really necessary when I was in the clerk's office, when I was actually doing the one-on-one work with these applications. But basically, the biggest problem with Title V is there were so many different chapters adopted decades apart, so there's just really not much flow, there's really no flow. It's difficult to manage from customer and staff perspectives. You have ten applications, all have different requirements and processes, and so you're scratching your head, trying to remember, "How does this work again?" So, the goal, the intent really is to just make it more streamlined and effective to meet everyone's needs. This is just a really big example of a confusing part of our code, is that the nomenclature doesn't fit the process. So, our chapters talk about different licensing for special regulatory business activities, but really, it's an endorsement. So, if you see an example here, if you're getting a, if you want to operate a business that does permits, peddling newspapers or selling door-to-door vacuum cleaners, you wouldn't get a second license, like the code actually says, you would get an endorsement. So, this, so this is just an example of trying to make the code meet the flow. So, what we did was, we wanted to take a look, kind of just stand back and look at what Title V actually does. We wanted to see what kind of activities were regulated and see if we could pair the chapters into some kind of an organization. So, we didn't just randomly have, you know, "Okay, chapter for, you know, 501 for permits", or "chapter for peddling", you know, we wanted to have some kind of a organization. So, we have, generally, we license anyone who comes in to operate a business in the city. And then we have endorsements. So, an endorsement is a regulated business entity. They get a general business license, at least for a year, and then they're, they're subject to one-year renewal. And then you have your permits where it, where their, their, the particular business entity is operating a specific activity for a limited amount of time, and it's non-renewable, and it makes sense that we don't require them to get an actual business license. So, I'd also like to introduce the new Title V ordinances that we have since drafted within the last year. So, if you'll see dropdown entertainment establishments, this is actually one huge ordinance that combines all of these separate chapters, card tables, pools, pool billiards, amusement devices, arcades, dance halls, nightclubs. And so, instead of having an endorsement chapter, yes, sir, go ahead.
Sir, why don't you just please step in, I wanted to ask a question, I want you to interrupt the stream.
Oh, okay, so, so I'll just finish real quick. So, instead of having an endorsement, a chapter that endorses a particular activity like card tables or pool and billiards, we would just have one, one big chapter that issues an entertainment endorsement. So, like back here, over here, so this, this person who got this particular business license, this person wanted a nightclub and a pool and billiards. So, those are two different chapters. So, now, we're cutting, we're cutting off those, those two separate chapters, and we're combining them into entertainment establishments. So, it's just more affecting, you know, if somebody wants to throw a pool table, then they can throw a pool table, because they've already got an entertainment establishment endorsement. Go ahead.
Could you jump back one slide, please? If, I heard you correctly, you said on the permits down there, you said, "It may require a permit, but not necessarily a business license." Can you give me an example of what that might be?
Right, so, let's say that somebody wants to sell vacuum cleaners door-to-door, and they, they don't actually have a business here in town, they just want to go door-to-door. They need to get a permit, but we're thinking that it makes sense that they don't actually need to get a business license. And that will also go along with the new, the new state law that was issued last year, where there are certain business sites, or businesses that are exempt from business licenses. So, I'll get to that in just a second.
Anna?
Yes, ma'am.
So, sometimes the Best Western or Fortuna or someone will have a gun show or jewelry. So, is that a permit, or is the business like, is this like one weekend, two days, that's it? And we may not see him again, or maybe the next year, so.
So, if it's just a general business, well, like the Elks Club, like you talked about the gun show, I don't think that needs, I mean, they operate business, right? The Elks Club is a business, so they probably have a general business license.
No, no, this is Best Western.
Oh, Best Western.
A jewelry show or a gun show, or you'll get a spare parking lot, and they're selling cars for two days, and it's none of our establishment in town. I know that Doug Merriman used to keep track of that on his calendar, and no one would post it, because we should be getting some sales tax revenue from there. So, he would keep, keep track of that to be sure we didn't miss out on our fair share of-
That may implicate a special events permit.
Okay, I just didn't know when you were saying if that would be a permit or a business license, if it's a one- or two-day event.
Yeah, it depends on, you know, if the business entity actually exists constantly, like I guess I would say, like Best Western, they physically exist.
But they're, they're buying spots at Best Western, they're renting Best Western to hold their jewelry or gun show. Sometimes on the school district, I've seen someone comes in with Corvettes, and they'll sell them, but it's not a business in town. The school district doesn't sell cars, but they are using that property, whether they pay him some money or not. So, I was just wondering if that was a permit, or they have a business license, or do they just get a state because they travel from city to city? But there are things that kind of pop up, but they advertise, because they put little, those little yard signs around saying, "Hey, this weekend, dah 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 dah", whether it be they rented at the Elks, or Best Western seems to have quite a bit.
So, this is actually a conversation we've had on multiple occasions, and where we've left it before is what we are concerned about, is the sales tax. It isn't something we have addressed for a while, but the conclusion that we've come to with things like Best Western is that Best Western has a conference center that it operates as a part of its business. And Best Western has a general business license and is authorized to conduct its business in the way that, that it tells the city that it's going to conduct its business. And so, at this point, we haven't wanted to further regulate that because they do have a conference center, and they are in the business of providing that conference center to people coming in. And a part of what that does is generate business for the rest of the city as well, if they're bringing in people for various events and such, because they shop in our stores. So, you know, this is something we've talked about multiple times, but where we have left that is what we care about, is the sales tax from those events, not necessarily further regulating those one-off events that are held in a business that already operates under a business license.
I just gotta jump in here, the other one she left out is tool sales. So, how do we know if they're not required to get any kind of event, except for seeing the yard signs, the advertisement? If we're worried about the sales tax, which we are, how do we know we're getting it? If we don't regulate it or permit it or endorse it?
Are you talking about located where, just?
Old Bird Ford Corner.
Old Bird Ford Corner, Knights of Columbus, the Cross and Deer Kinderhoos, the American Legion, they always do tool sales, not always. At times, they'll do tool sales, jewelry shows, gun shows, car shows, I haven't seen in a while, not car shows, but dealerships will come over here and do a weekend car sale thing. So, these events occur, you're saying we don't regulate them at all? We're licensing them or endorse them or permit them right now?
If they come in and they say, "I'd like a business license because I'm going to conduct business in the city," then we, of course, license them. But oftentimes, we don't, it's not something that we know about, and we haven't, up to this point, gone after them and said, "Hey, you need to come in and do X, Y, Z." When we-
Look into that, since we're doing this in a workshop format.
When we move forward with our amendments regarding, relating to what is exempted from a business license, from a general business license, we'll talk about thresholds, and council can decide where they want to be in terms of thresholds, like, okay, if it's making, if this is, if this person is coming in and making less than a thousand dollars or two thousand dollars, then we're gonna exempt them. But council can decide where we want to be in terms of the amount of money that is exempted. And that can play into that discussion.
Yes, sir.
See, I want to just comment on both of those.
Department of Revenue requires people to collect sales tax. Whether I sell you a vehicle or whatever, the state's still gonna get their sales tax. So, I'm not quite sure how the sales tax is captured in the scenario that you just gave us. We don't know they're here selling. So, how does the state collect their sales tax?
That's a more attritional question, but I believe they have to self-report where they are.
Yeah, they have to self-report, and I do know most states do have people that are in enforcement in that, and they'll go around and, well, you've heard about this, hands for the children for lemonade that they shut down because they're not charging sales tax. I'm assuming that's kind of the same, people that go around and check to make sure that those kind of things were, they're paying it. I don't know how we would, we don't have a body on staff that's gonna go door-to-door or event-to-event to verify sales taxes being collected or reported.
So, technically, somebody from another county, for example, Skagit, has a lower sales tax rate than we have, could come to Island County, conduct their event, and report that they collected that in Skagit County, because maybe that's where their business is, or that's where the sales tax is the last. So, they collect the sales tax here, but report the rate for Skagit County. What's the audit procedure for doing that?
I probably would, I'll call the Department of Revenue, find out if they have a way to audit that or check into that, but I know we don't have anything in finance set up to check that, so we need to figure something out. I don't know what that would be or how you would do that.
Thank you.
Sure thing, thank you. So, going back here to the new Title V ordinances, I just wanted to give you guys a heads-up on some of the new chapters that we've drafted. So, I talked briefly about the entertainment establishments that combines these other chapters. And then we also introduced the Transportation Network Company. This is something that would regulate specifically, like companies like Uber and Lyft, which this would be more practical for these type of businesses versus just one of the traditional taxi cab endorsements, because there's a lot of different rules that go along with that. And then the mobile food vendor, this is something that we, we wanted to see in the last couple of years, so we've got that on track and going through development services as well. And then film permits. So, this is just a snapshot, just a screenshot of our current title outline. This is kind of what I did, just to show you a visual of a cut, cut out of what we're doing, combining and moving around, kind of fun. And then this is what it's going to look like, the new product. So, this is the new, the new state law that came out last summer, summer 2017. The purpose is to simplify the administration of general business licenses for applicants and improve the business climate. So, this will impact our city. This will require cities who issue general business licenses to enroll their process in either business licensing services, that's the state, or file local, which is an inter-local agency that's created this administering system. There are pros and cons to both systems. I've done a lot of vetting with these two processes and have turned it over to finance, and so finance is in the middle of reviewing and weighing both programs. And so, that will be coming up soon. We'll be deciding, you know, which program better meets our needs to administer business licensing. licensing soon. So the state law is also going to mandate that we adopt model business license ordinance. The ordinance itself is pretty small. I was a little nervous at first, like, oh my goodness, what are they going to require us to do? But it's, it's really just you have one of two exemptions and then it has a, it has a definition section. And then we have the option to choose one of the two threshold options. So the threshold option, so this, so the threshold option, it only applies to businesses that are not endorsements. So just your general licensed business. So option one, this is kind of what Mrs. Barso was talking about earlier, is that the city will have the option to choose the amount for an exemption. So if a business brings in 2,000 or higher, if the city chooses, and does not maintain a location in the city limits, they will be exempt from general business licensing requirements. And the option two is the same, only they have to register with the direct finance director.
Do you have a current dollar amount? If that, when my son registered his detail in business, I thought there was some numbers at state? If it's 12,000 or less, is there a 12,000 dollar number? State level?
State level. And any business conducted in the city is supposed to have a business license?
Okay. So we don't have a dollar amount right now?
No.
No, we do not. It's just everything. So when I was talking about permits earlier where you won't necessarily have to be required to get a business license, this will kind of go hand in hand with these new regulations. So, so the deadlines are, so we have to adopt model ordinance by January next year. I've already got that weeded into our new 5.01 chapter, it's ready to go. It's in the review process right now with finance. BLS, if we choose to go with the state, we have until December 31st, 2021, and if we choose to go with file local, by July 1st, 2020. And finance is also weighing pros and cons. There's, and there's so many factors to look into with these two systems, so it'll, it'll be quite an undertaking and I'm sure you guys will all hear more about that. But that is it in a snapshot. Do you guys have any questions? Any more questions?
First, thank you. In the packet, we have the PowerPoint.
Yes.
Huge. Mr. O'Bourn, take note. It's always nice to have those ahead of time so we can review back to it. So we have BLS and file local. You said we have to.
Yes.
Another one of these mandates we all love. Why? What is the, what's the long end game here for the state or how does it benefit us locally?
Well, I mean, the state's trying to...
Consolidate.
Consolidate workflow.
For whom? For whom?
Not necessarily us.
Who do you think?
I mean, I'm not against processes. If there, if there's an end, if they're streamlining the whole system, is that the, is there an end game that they've...
Arguably, it's a one-stop shop. You can get your state license and your city license all in one centralized location.
Like if you, if we were to go, let's say eventually with business licensing services, that's where you can get your state there, you can get your locals. And I mean, if you, if you drive a truck through several different cities, you could, you know, add all of those cities and have one ticket to pay, I guess, with one credit card, one transaction.
Does that make sense?
Right. So I think, I think that's the overall goal is just to enhance the business climate, just to make it easier instead of having to figure out, okay, Oak Harbor does it this way, you know, Ana Cortez does it this way, just to have more streamlined process.
Just trying to get in front of it before the phone starts ringing. Thanks.
AWC was looking into this. There were businesses that were complaining because they had to get separate license for different cities. And the state says, oh, that's okay, we'll handle it all. But then the cities got nervous because we have certain regulations we would like to keep for our own and we wouldn't necessarily know that they had a license in our city. So it's been going back and forth and I don't know how it's really going to be, but MRSC and Victoria Lincoln at AWC can probably give you the latest on if they think it's, it's going to be fair to cities or not. Probably not. The state's going to end up collecting the money and we'll be lucky to get our fair share.
That's why, that's why file local was created. It's, it's an interlocal that was entered into by the bigger cities, like Seattle, Tacoma, bigger, bigger cities. This is their creation and it is much more city friendly.
But, but to clarify, sorry, to clarify though, we, this is, BLS would not keep any of our income. It's actually free to cities, but they pass on the fees to the business owner. So it's $19, I think to them.
AWC's been working on this for three or four years, so I've been on the discussions from the beginning.
Okay, okay.
They have not come back with the final, final and they see as it triples down and how the city, so it's just, I'm just putting out exactly what the background is, is some businesses thought they could get off easier by not having to apply in different areas and just do one state. But then, you know, everybody's going, well, wait a minute, that doesn't fit our city or what's happening there. And how do we know they have a license if they don't walk in the, I mean, there's been all kinds, but that's basically why it's supposed to streamline it. We'll see.
And the other thing it's supposed to do is revenues. It's supposed to help find revenues because when they go in to register for somewhere in their addresses, Oak Harbor, or they put down the services they're going to do in Oak Harbor, then it automatically triggers the process to happen for the city. So that's the benefit that they're selling when they talk about it.
It's probably there, but I got to ask them where. Anyway, is the zoning component still there? Because one of the things most cities do business licenses, they want to make sure that the business is in the right zoning. So I'm assuming that that component still stays as part of the application or the endorsement process?
What I heard is supposed to refer it to us and we do our process.
We have approval process.
Okay. Yeah, because if you're a certain business classified, you have to meet the zoning components and so...
I understand.
Yeah, okay. So it still stays in the streamlined process?
It doesn't take away our, our authority or our, yeah, our approval authority at all.
We still have the same rules?
Yes.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our next item. Under engineering, optional services for Enviro Issues, Windjammer Park.
Now, I did have to prepare and hand out some of my presentation, but I'm not as efficient as Alan on the field land. I have to hand out for later. Good afternoon. Our Clean Water Facility's been going on for three years. It's been an intense effort, of course, and we've all been kind of focusing on starting up the Platten and putting it in operation, which is, of course, our final goal, but we're starting to think a little bit about what happens afterwards. You know, all the contractors, consultants will be disappearing and what do we do from there? One aspect I wanted to talk about today is something that you see a lot, but you don't know a lot about them. And we've been using Enviro Issues as our public relations, public involvement consultants since 2010. Reason we engaged them at the time was we did not have the city staff for these communications outreach programs. And I think over the last few years, they've proven very critical to us. Enviro Issues has played a central role in keeping the community involved and engaged in our, in our project because we've done a lot of public meetings. I don't know how many times we've scheduled stuff out at the Elks Club, I lost track a long time ago. You know, we've done advisory groups, user surveys. I think coming out of the Windjammer program, we did the integration plan. We had a citizen involvement committee, which I think is, was very critical to having a great plan. And that continued on into our design where I think the community had a lot of input in how we designed that park and I think we're seeing the results now. They also have done a lot of things that we do in day-to-day communication. We've operated under a good neighbor plan on the construction site and generally we have good relationship with our neighbors on the job, even though we're, we're a big disruption. But we do a lot of emailing, we've done newsletters on a periodic basis, our website, you know, we've had signs, Webby Sign Company has done well with this project. And we've tried to keep the, the community involved and aware of this project. But as we move forward, from the project, Enviro Issues contract is pretty much over in November. We have our normal email newsletters going out and we have a ribbon cutting in the proposal work. So basically after November, December, we're probably going to go black or go silent because we haven't planned on what's going on after that. But I would like to step back and say where we have been. I think, as I said earlier, our Windjammer Park was a great effort in trying to get our community involved with this. We have run a lot of updates and emails, websites. I remember last night, one of the council members was looking at our website as we, as we talked. I can say, we've done a lot of participation in public events and surveys. I think our, when we did Windjammer, when we were doing the design stretch last year, we were having over 100 people respond, 150 people respond to our surveys, which in our business is pretty good. You know, we've had signage handouts. One thing that's not always obvious, but we actually had a lot of outreach and reached a population, we did family fun days, it was a public works event, that we reached a whole lot of people that just don't go to public events because they're raising kids and doing stuff. And I felt those were some of our best talking to people about, because you have people that go to meetings or follow city politics, but you know, people raising their kids aren't always involved. So I remember talking to a lot of kids about the Splash Park. But like I say, we're starting to see a transition to where we go from now and like I say, I would like to continue some level of communication and we'd like to bring this forward, but you know, one is, we need to celebrate our successes. This has been a difficult project for us. It's, it's been a big challenge and I think we've met the challenge, but we need to look towards the future. You know, like I say, it's, it's becoming our, our project, our facility and where do we go with it? We're also going to be dealing with some new transition stuff with the Navy. I think we do have some messaging and communication going on with that process. Navy does have their own public involvement people, but we need to make sure that we stay on top of what we want to accomplish with that. We, we want to keep the community informed through the completion of the Clean Water Facility and the construction of the park. I can say, we're going silent after the first of the year, but the park will not be available for several months. So I think we do need to keep people updated on what's going on. And as we start the facility up, we want to keep people like, all of a sudden they start seeing new truck traffic or seeing some activity or hearing new noise or something, so we can respond to those types of needs. So I'd really like to be able to communicate that. We are starting two programs that we've never done before and that's a bio solids reuse program and a water reuse program. And those require some communications. As, I see bio solids as more of a marketing issue. We want to develop a market for our bio solids, our dried sludge. And that's, in the business, a lot of, what we're dealing with is renewable waste, it's a good fertilizer, but it can be perceived as a toxic waste. So we want to get ahead of that communication and make sure people understand the benefits of our stuff and, and understand it's not particularly dangerous. But I've been involved in many situations where a neighbor, somebody puts bio solids on their yard and the neighbor gets upset and it's very common in our industry. So I want to make sure that as we market this forward, we also want to make it, the more we can get rid of the material and eventually maybe make some money off of it and make it attractive, it helps us in our overall programs. We need to support the, the city in where we go move forth rates and how we finish up the project, sort of what I talked about a little sooner. Also, I'd like to build some excitement about reopening the park. I'm starting to feel this now, just from people I talk to, is we want people to get back in, they want to, we're talking about doing events next summer. I'd like to see several events, you know, I was talking about, we had some ideas like having a tree planting with some of our Gary Oaks or try to get people back in the park, opening up the Splash Park. I think the big finale would be, hopefully, the 4th of July, when it's, when it's back in full service. But I'd really like to see a strategy on how we come back in the park and, and celebrate what we want to do. Also, I'd like to see us talk about where we want to go with the park. You know, we finished an ambitious phase one and we have other phases we want to do. And I think once we get finished with something, those other phases or people are going to be more interested in doing them because they've seen the result. So anyway, we're looking at continuing our outreach. Like I said, we want to build the excitement, keep that moving. It's not budgeted now. One thing we have budgeted in our system is sort of a formal ribbon cutting in this fall where we bring all the electeds and people to participate and, and have the formal session there. And that's sort of the end of the road for our involvement. I would like to see a little more than that occur and how we do it is questioned. We want to help the community stay up to date with that as we move through the, move into the summer, so that extends past that. We do want to create the messaging for our long-term operations. It's not really a, it's not really a capital cost per the, for the project, but it's going to be more of an ongoing operations cost. We want to provide clear and consistent message. I think we've done a good job with that, with the better we do with that. And Enviro Issues has been a great help to us in that because we have a lot of great people, but sometimes we work in a different environment and a different nomenclature and they really help us get that messaging where people can really understand it. And like I say, I'd like to really see us celebrate what we've done. It has been a big challenge. So I've asked Enviro Issues to provide us some ideas and some cost estimates for some levels of service. First one is project management strategic report, which I actually think is the most important one. You know, if we do this, there is a certain amount of project management involved and that's budgeting, saying bills, making sure people there and that's always any project. One thing we do a lot of is strategic conversations, meetings, so as we work forward on these things, we get them involved with our conversations. So in our project team, we have Tuesday meetings with our core group and they're very much involved with that, making sure that we're, we're seeing ahead and moving ahead with the right strategy. And they do help us with ongoing communications for initiatives like the Navy initiative. I think we want to make sure that we have a great communication strategy for that. So I'd really like to have their assistance with that. Like I say, the facility startup, as we move forward, I'd like to make sure that we're still communicating and celebrating and, and moving forward with operational initiatives. I think Windjammer Park stands by itself. We do have construction support and like I said, we have a black period there for three or four months I'd really like to fill. And like I say, when we open the park up, I think we really need to have some celebration for that. I have asked them to put together some cost estimates. We did set this up so we can pick and choose. We do have the ability, some of this may, should come out of the project budget, some of it should be coming out of operating budgets. The silly startup stuff, I think we can probably cover that with, with operating budgets. The first one I think is quite critical, but it's really not a big part of the cost. And you know, how we handle the, the Windjammer Park construction and celebration, that's our idea right now. Again, that's something we can manipulate as we move forward. Anyway, I have asked Enviro Issues to explain this little word in a handout so we can take that forward, but I do, I do want to step back and compliment them on the work they've done for us. It's been a difficult project. I think we have a good presence in the community and I'd like to continue that.
I've been distracted with family inundated activities, but on Laurel Lane, you know, it's kind of across from, it's across from the Navy Base and kind of the back, backside of where they flooded, you know, that thing. Someone made a presentation to that area. They showed it up at someplace else in town and were saying that as soon as the plant opens up, that property over there is going to... that property over there is going to flood on their side of the street. And my husband went, "What?" And he came home and said, "What are you guys doing with information?" And I haven't had the time yet to track down where they were, but it was the Laurel Lane residence. And someone made a presentation to them and they came away with the idea that as soon as we are up and operating and they're not doing the sludge plant, that all that water is gonna go across the street and start flooding all that property. I'm just, it is as far-fetched as you can imagine, but someone was somewhere publicly and saying all of this and my husband just went and left and came home. And I got it all, so I'm just wondering if you happen to know?
That one I haven't heard. You know, we do have-
Okay, well, I'll find out and I'll get it to you. Maybe we can track it down and have our own meeting.
And some of what we do is clarify ideas. I had, you know, there's been, you know, a lot of things going around town about the facility, but you know, we do get calls from people who want to know what's going on and find, you know, when we closed the RV park, I handled probably 30 calls that I don't have any hang handled. But you know, one thing we do is try to get at it so people can get something. And you know, occasionally something like this comes up and we said, we handed the newsletter and we sent to everybody in town and say, you know, this is what we said. And so part of our communication strategy is to inform people to our best ability what's going on and be transparent about it. And you know, these rumors and this kind of float around, but we actually can dispel them pretty. And I had a guy call me yesterday and he was, you know, he had some opinions about the cost of the project, but he says, you know, "I'm hearing this. I don't believe it." And so he asked me about it and he said, and he called me, he said, "No, thank you." You know, I says, "I was talking to somebody and they were telling me a whole bunch of stuff." And it was like about our bio solids, how we operate the facility. So that, part of the communication strategy is to get the best information out and a lot of people do hear it or if they have a question, they know where to call, you know.
I know this has come up in the construction meeting and I'm going back and forth on it. I firmly believe, and I've said this in that meeting, I'll say it here too, we need to be in front of this with some kind of messaging. Having said that, I'm not convinced though that we can't do it internally. I do agree we need to celebrate the successes. This is wrapping up the most monumental project who Carver's ever seen. Good, bad, or indifferent, it's wrapping up and we're getting ready to open the park. I guess where I have some strong pause is, you know, last night we had to approve $600,000-ish that we didn't really have. And at some point, you know, the really pragmatic part of me has to say, you know, when can we do this internally? And you know, I think about all of the charrettes we've done, the workshops. We mail out multiple mailings of 6,000-plus flyers, a utility flyer, and we get 12 people that show up. So how effective, it's good in concept, but how effective are those flyers? I get questions all the time, right after one of those flyers might have come out. And I said, "Well, two weeks ago, you should have got a flyer in your utility bill." I never got a flyer. So you'll still answer the phone, you'll still give great information when they hear a rumor. If there's one area that I would really probably endorse is 2B, the bio solids. That is so unique. I'll sign up for the, well, not the first load, let's make sure the processes work and I'll take the second load. But at some point, you know, I gotta kind of be concerned that this is something we can do internally. We don't need them, you know, they're a great firm and all that. But that's just my thoughts at the moment is, if we're gonna do something, maybe on the stuff that, like 2B is very unique, but the park will open. The fireworks, I saw our chamber director come in, the fireworks hopefully are gonna happen. The grass should be, you know, that stuff will happen. So I'd rather see $104,000 go back into, you know, gearing up for Phase Two. The other concern I have, and I've said this in the construction meeting, is the perimeter of the park is gonna be nice and new. The inside is not. So the public is gonna go, "What happened? Why'd you chintz out?" And it's just, obviously, there's a lot of conversation that's gone into the phasing and what we can afford. So that's where the messaging is important, is there's still more to come. But I don't know, when I see these totals after what we went through last night, it's kind of like geek.
So can I say something? That Task Two, we can handle and I believe that we should handle and have that program through our sewer operating fund. We'll put that into our budget for 2019 and we'll probably need to continue that for a while, maybe not to that extent, but we will need to continue to have marketing for our materials and our water reuse. If you want to do it internally, we can answer the phone and answer questions, but we are not marketing people. And so I would just ask that you think of that. If you're expecting something really slick coming out of us, you're gonna get a lot of technical geeky stuff, just saying.
And that's, I gotta add on that, you know, we don't have certain capacities. I personally think the city should expand into some of those capacities, but do I have that next November? You know, that's my concern.
I differ with Counselor Servadius on this. I think that hiring Enviro Issues is some of the best money we've ever spent, personally. The outreach has been extraordinary, the charrettes, the slick, you know, postcards and the signage. You know, we don't have a graphic designer on staff. We don't have a marketing expert on staff. And to me, and I feel your frustration, Joel, when people say, "Well, nobody asked us and we didn't have a say in this happening." It was, okay, well, actually, we sent out 42,000 mailers, utility bills, online ads, emails, et cetera. I think that just being able to say that has value. You can't quantify it, but just being able to say, hey, we have reached out 17 times in the last 18 months with this kind of number, that has value. And I, I've just, I've been so impressed with Enviro Issues every, I mean, since the first time Erin and her crew came in. And for their contract to end and us to go, I mean, you say, "Go dark." I mean, obviously, we'll communicate as best that we can. Just in terms of my experience in internal communications, I have a lot of skepticism when it comes to saying, yeah, in-house, we can generate all this communication. I don't think we have the bandwidth to do it, it's just a capacity issue. So for the park to be closed and things happening and no information going out, that's not acceptable to me. That's, yeah, I think that we need to have a really, really robust outreach and keep people updated and absolutely throw the public a one hell of a party when we actually open. Oh my gosh, they've been so patient. So I would keep them on, I'd sign another contract with Enviro Issues in a heartbeat. I'm in a heartbeat. So I'm, I wrote down critical service and question, like, I consider them a critical part of the treatment and Windjammer Park project. I think I've got on my notes.
Thank you, Mayor. Brett, as you said, messaging or selling our successes on this project has been a problem. Why has it been a problem if Enviro Issues has been so successful and the money that we spent is the best money we've ever spent?
I could, I would say that we've had issues and we've tried the best we can. It's been a long slog. I would hate to see what would have been like if we hadn't done this effort. And so, yeah, we've had our controversies and we've had our challenges. I think that's part of the process. It is, this Clean Water Facility would have been a big project for the city of Seattle or something bigger. And I'll speak personally, is, there's a lot of people that have stood up the line and, you know, from the council to staff to our consultants. Yeah, I can't say it's been the cleanest process in the world, but I look at what's happening and what we've done. It is time, we do, we have tried to do the best we can. I did not expect to go on this thing without zero controversy. And I consider the Enviro Issues or public involvement in terms of payback more so than, I consider that more important than hiring a process engineer to do this thing because in the end, nobody understands the sewage treatment technology, but they will understand what we accomplished and what we left behind us.
My comments are not to shoot down your presentation or Enviro Issues. My questions are to challenge the thought process and whether, what other options could be considered that would line up with $104,000?
And that's why we kept this at an optional level right now. We're not coming with a contract. I asked the question myself, should we bring somebody on board to do this? And maybe that's, spending that money is capacity we really need to develop. I think the city, I personally feel the city can use this capacity in a lot of different areas. But I think it's something we need to do and the question is how best to do it. This is how we've done it historically. Do we want to try something else? That's the question we're asking today.
Okay, how much have we spent to date on Enviro Issues on this project?
I was gonna print that number with me, I forgot.
I think I have that. I asked Finance to provide some numbers. The Clean Water Facility contract was $301,000 and the Windjammer Park portion was an extra $40,000. And it looks like we've still got, so that would be a total of $340,000 if you combined Windjammer. And I'm not, and it looks like there's still $50,000 remaining.
And that's gonna be burned out in our last, we're saving that for the remaining services and we still have two bills coming in, so.
Okay, so it's pretty well spent.
It's pretty well spent, and $340,000.
Okay, so do we process through Corolo or is it an independent contract?
What I would suggest-
What have we been doing?
We've been doing it as a subcontractor to Corolo.
Okay, so then we add another 5% to all of this?
Uh, no. What I am suggesting here is we can do an on-call contract with Enviro Issues directly. We have had that discussion, so.
No, but what, excuse me.
Yeah.
What we have been doing has been through Corolo. Corolo tags on 5% approximately.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just trying to look at what the real number is of where we've gotten to date. So really, we've spent pretty close to $400,000.
As of the end of November?
About three seventy-five.
That's-
And part of this discussion is, we're moving away from designing the structure, we're moving into that. So I have had this conversation with Enviro Issues of contracting with them directly and that is a potential here.
Okay, then my final question is, do you think that the Chamber can play a meaningful role in helping sell this project at the close-out stage?
I think so. I had a couple of conversations on the phone with Christine and I think that, to me, is, I would like to us to develop some synergy and develop, it is a community process and I'm not gonna get out there and sell used cars. I think we need to get people involved. Like I say, I think we have a community asset that I'm hoping we all recognize a year from now.
And I only bring that up because the Chamber knows this community better than Enviro Issues knows this community, in my opinion, okay?
And I think using them as a resource is something we have discussed.
Or a combination of the two.
Like I say, we have some options here, that's what we threw out. If we want to develop other options or other alternatives, that, to me, I think the need is there. How do we best meet the need?
Okay, thank you, Brett.
So I've got a couple of questions. We know what the decision was regarding the windmill. Does Enviro Issues have any plan? I mean, for communication regarding that or lack of it?
Right now, they are willing to keep moving under our existing contract and deal with that. And, but, you know, the windmill was out of the contract. So those are things that, like I say, I have a very finite budget for very finite activities. All of a sudden, I'm doing things to communicate on the windmill. And to me, that's critical because I don't want to have a return of the, you know, the post office oak tree, you know?
Sure.
And so I, and so I, you know, that to me is, you know, there, I talked to Carrie about this morning. It says, you know, how do, you know, we need to communicate that and how best to do that because it's coming at us very quickly. And so, again, I can use your budget for that, then I take budget away from stuff that we'd already, you know, set up for. And so that's why I'm asking the question. Now I'm dealing with real-term needs that are short.
Counselor Heisen.
I would argue that the windmill thing was, should have been reconciled when the drafts of the new park went out, where people could see that the windmill would eventually move, you know, just moving it sooner or taking it down sooner. You know, other than the timeline, nothing's changed, but that's a whole other conversation. So when discussing options, I'm taking notes here so we could, you know, contract with Enviro Issues directly for X amount of time. The benefit there is they have the history, they have the knowledge, all the documentation. They've been here and formed a relationship, so that would be seamless. Another option would be for the city, if we want to take six figures a year or more, we can hire our own marketing outreach, graphic design, communication person on staff. And that would give us a chance to expand our, the scope of services to more than just this project. That would take time. I mean, how long would it take to find somebody and train them and get them up to speed? So I would not be opposed in general for the city to have our own person that can create all that slick marketing stuff. But in the interim, we do have some time-critical things coming up. And so since we have someone competent onboard, I would be in favor of, even if it was, you know, literally until opening day, if the contract, it doesn't need to be long-term. Anyway.
Thank you, I'll just follow up on, Councilmember Heisen. You went right where I was gonna go. Brett, you said we have a need, it's just how to best fulfill the need. So I just, once again, I understand the need of marketing here. And that's, we're tailing this, where I was thinking is, and I've said this to the mayor, many of us have said it, we are due, it's time for a public affairs officer, communications officer, public relations person, whatever it is. So, and I don't know if that's, that's not a six-figure job. I know we looked up what Connor makes and what the district pays him. So I think there's, it is timely, but I think there's still, we're gearing up for a budget cycle here and this is one of my priorities for the 11th, is a communications officer. You know, many, how do I say this? A lot of the city's issues, there's a better word out there, but a lot of times it's communicating with the public, right? It's that interface, not just internally, we talked about that, but how do we better interface and inform the public? And this is a perfect example, there's a huge need here to do this correctly. But rather than having that money go just out the door, if we could somehow keep it internally and, as Mr. Rosen said, there's going to be, especially with the bio solids, that's an ongoing education effort to get people comfortable. I don't know if it'll have a pencil out to make this money, but at least if we can disperse it locally rather than have to truck it, that's an advantage for the environment. And so I agree with Councilmember Heisen that there's, it is timely, but we're about to gear up to approve a budget and I'll be asking for that on the 11th as one of my priorities, so we can consider that as well.
We talked about working and collaborating. So Enviro Issues has documentation, they've already got a lot of stuff. But if we could ask the Chamber, if they might, if they have the business, they know the town, to come up with something joint. Enviro Issues can say, well, we've got the graphics because I'm not sure the Chamber has that type of graphic person. But if we jointly do something and then, I don't know, maybe add one of the city council members or, I mean, somebody else to-
Yeah, make it clear, the cost of this, my show is not all or nothing.
Right.
We get to pick, I- We get to pick, I, when we set this up, we can pick and choose the type of service we want. I just put out a list of services and tried to give you some, some scale on that, so I set this up, I call it the Chinese menu approach, à la carte's probably a better way of putting it. So, we can do this and I just wanted to identify the needs and if, if we can go to another route for something, that certainly Enviro Issues is certainly willing to help us with that, so, yeah, if we want them to help with transition services on that, that certainly are available.
But this is August.
Yeah.
It's ending soon and it usually takes several months to gear up with your vision on how you're going to go. And we're behind on the timetable, if you really wanna, I mean, my personal opinion, so, but we have some talent in town and if we can collaborate and Enviro Issues may be able to say, well, if you can get ahold of someone who can do this and that's how you start to work. We have our own physiographer right here who has done a lot of things in a lot of areas. Yeah. But something special for Channel 10 that is, that is snappy, I mean, but we've gotta pull our resources together and we need to do it sooner than later. I'm just saying, we've got talent. What we're short of is a lot of funds, but we've got an agency that has been working with us, that has done this before in other cities. We don't have that type of expertise, but they could help pull what we do have in town and they could ask questions about, do we have this, do we have that? I mean, you can pull in your sign makers, you can pull, I mean, there's a way, not staff time because that's not your field, it's not mine, but I mean, you know, you, you can get someone like Enviro Issues to start pulling in the talent and using the resources that we have and it makes our money go even farther. So, I'm just throwing that as a suggestion, but this is a workshop, we're working it through, but we need to get busy.
I think the à la carte contract is a great way to do that, just that we only need you to do, you know, A, B, and C and for X amount of time to get someone else up to speed, so it's nice that, that they're willing to do it on an à la carte basis instead of, no, we need one big contract for X amount of months for X amount of dollars. So, I, I appreciate the firm's willingness to be flexible to kind of help us leverage that local, local talent and then, and look into getting our own person and maybe helping them get onboard, so, yeah, I think it's all good things.
So, meantime, I will talk to Jean and talk about some sort of a partnership.
I will, I'll keep, continue discussions with Enviro Issues and we need to bring a contract forward, it'll probably be the second meeting in September, I guess.
Second meeting in what?
In September. Like I say, we have some budget left, I'm gonna use some of it for the windmill, but like I said, I'm just cutting into things right now.
Anyone else? Okay, move on to our next item, which is Public Works Biosolid Storage Facility.
Someday, this may be where Councilmember Servavius comes to get some biosolids.
What are you selling?
Our biosolids management plan that was prepared by Corolo has suggested that we may wish to construct a facility to store the dried biosolids away from the clean water facility. We clearly don't have a space down there in the, in that vicinity for that purpose. The facility must be suitable for loading and unloading the material and it's gotta be in a covered, open area that is protected from surface drainage. This facility will improve our reliability of biosolids transport and reuse. Sometimes, we may not be able to get the biosolids to where they're going because of weather or field availability. It would allow for storage of the product, product for use by city forces on city property. We may take some out and put it on the Gary Oak or the Centennial Oak Grove area, up on our old landfill, those kinds of things. At some point, Hank may want to put some in the parks. It would also allow a location for distribution of the product to customers seeking small amounts, should the city wish to make it available in the future. And we may need to, depending on what that customer mix is and the demand, we may need to, to store it for a period of time. So, we've looked for the least expensive way to do that.
Question, when you say, may need to store it, not because of volume, but because of additional decomposition of the material? To meet the requirements of the user?
No, no. It, it will just be maybe, maybe they don't have a need for it right now or we're changing the customer mix or those kinds of things.
Or we may have a seasonal, we may have somebody that uses it in the summertime.
But we're talking about a covered shed?
Yeah.
Yes, but yeah, we'll show you a picture of what we're talking about. So, the, the location we've selected is on the city property behind the Public Works facility, so up there, it's not on the actual landfill garbage area, but it's up there within that fenced area. The proposed structure is 45 by 60. We went out and received bids and those bids ranged from a low of $32,900 to over $60,000 and that was just for the structure only. City staff will perform the site work, which will include pouring this lab, we're gonna have to connect it to sewer and erecting the structure. And we would fund this through our sewer fund, it wouldn't be a capital cost to the clean water facilities, it won't be included in the numbers that you see every month in Brett's reports. Steve Beebe has this money available this year in his sewer operating budget. So, the low bid was big top structures and this is what it would look like. We have the ecology blocks from the clean water facility project, we already have those. The crew would pour us lab and once the structure gets here, they would erect the structure. So, it is basically a shit, a fabric-covered shed. So, the next steps for this, we'll, we'll present the purchase agreement to city council at your meeting on September 4th, then we'll get our building permits to, we need to show the building department how the structure is connected to the ecology blocks and then we're looking to complete it in 2018, October of 2018. Is there any questions?
We have some pretty good winds around here. Is it gonna be tethered down, I mean, somehow, I just worry about, it's that open one air and you get, not often, you know, you set it up so it doesn't do the westerly or it doesn't whatever, but I have seen the wind numbers there at the marina, sometimes it really shocks you on how it whips through there, so to be sure that isn't...
Yes, it's engineered and the connections to the ecology blocks are engineered and that's part of the building permit process.
Nickel Brothers has about six of these on their site and they love them and they're very functional and they don't have a problem with the rainwater.
Thank you.
Counselor Heisen, maybe I missed something here. Are these the fabric-covered ones or are they pre-engineered metal?
It's fabric.
Okay, all right, I was looking down when I was writing. The next question is, what kind of volume do you anticipate being able to store in there and how long will that volume stay there? You're gonna have to rotate this stuff out, you don't have limited, unlimited capacity.
Well, I think the, the goal is for it to go right from the plant to a location, a nursery, a container, what do you call it?
Container nursery.
Yes, container nursery.
Yeah, there's a bunch of uses. Generally, we put these things in site, one for weather, so, and others, you know, we have a container nursery that wants all the material in the, in the spring when they're getting ready to plant or we may have, we're gonna have a, if we do it right, we're gonna have a customer mix and we want to have some, like, this is probably designed for a couple hundred yards at most. Generally, you want to have about a month worth of storage, just in case you have...
Okay, that, that, now you're getting to what I was asking. So, there's a couple hundred thousand cubic...
Couple hundred, couple hundred yards.
Well, that's nothing.
Yeah.
That's only 20 truck tons.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're, we're producing about 10, 15, 10, 15 yards per week.
So, the capacity, it has to roll out of there pretty quickly then if you're doing that kind of capacity per week?
A couple hundred yards will last you 10 weeks.
Have you done any exploring, like to LeFever Turf and to Sunland and to...
That's part of the marketing.
Yes, that's part of the marketing, but...
So, you guys are already reaching?
Mr. Beebe has had conversations with several.
All right.
You know, we've talked about this, I support it. The one thing you said yesterday, we're gonna pour this lab and we're connecting it to the sewer.
No, it will be connected to the sewer.
Why?
In case there's any runoff or...
Yes, we will have some runoff from it, you just can't handle with it. This is a dry material, it's gonna be dusty and you're always gonna have some way around here, we cannot discharge this material to the storm sewer, so it's gotta go back to the sanitary sewer.
So, is there some kind of a curtain drain that would catch? I'm just curious how.
I'm sure.
I don't have a trench drain on. And the biggest reason for the trench drain is connected to the sewer is, there is gonna, Kathy's gonna be talking about facility, we're gonna be having a contract with some of this material, we'll have to go to Boulder Park at the beginning until we get the dryer up and running and that would be a Class B material and that, that material cannot be land-applied and so it is basically dried sewage and if we get any leachate off of that, it would be collected in the sewer.
Any more? Okay. Go to IVB, biosolids, beneficiary services.
Okay, this is what Steve was just talking about. For a period of time after we start the dryer, the Department of Ecology is gonna require us to treat it as Class B biosolids. Even though it might meet the, the standard of Class A, we have to be able to show DOE that we can consistently produce a Class A biosolids. And we don't know what, how long that period is right now, it could be a month, it could be three months, we just don't know. So, during that time, we have to treat it as Class B and it needs to be transported east of the mountains, over to Boulder, to the Boulder Park project where the majority of Class B biosolids go for beneficial reuse. And what we'll be bringing to you on September 4th is a proposed agreement between the City of Oak Harbor, Boulder Park, Inc., and King County and that contract will allow the city to purchase Boulder Park, Inc.'s services, which will include all the work necessary for the utilization of the city's biosolids at their Boulder Park project, so it's land-applied. We'll lease King County's biosolids application equipment to use in the land application of the city's biosolids. It also provides for the transport of the city's biosolids to the Boulder Park project at a cost of $1,970 per truckload. And what Steve was talking about is we'll have to take the biosolids for this period of time, we'll take the biosolids that are generated at the plant up to this storage shed until there's enough for the Boulder Park equipment to, to be full and haul it over the mountains to Eastern Washington. There's a lease cost of $14.16 per wet ton and if anybody asks me what a wet ton is, Brett is gonna have to answer that. Payment to the city, Boulder Park, Inc. will also pay the city $7.50 per dry ton. So, we'll get a little bit back, but we'll be paying for trucking and application. And the next step is we will bring this to you on September 4th, 2018. There may be times periodically, the agreement is, will allow us to take it over there sporadically. For example, if we have to take the dryer down for maintenance, we may have another period of time where we have to treat it as Class B until we're consistently showing that we can produce a Class A. Any questions?
Thank you. Ms. Rosen, in some of our meetings, we are talking about the options of hauling stabilized sludge to Eastern Washington. Is this the same place to haul that stabilized sludge?
Yes.
Going out, those volumes basically in perpetuity for this plant? If we didn't go with a biosolids dryer within the plant? And if I remember correctly, the biosolids dryer equipment, all of the mechanical, the buildings, all the parts to that added about $14 million to that project. Is that correct?
I think it's less than that, but that's probably a good round number by time to building.
That's my, when we were looking at a budget one time about that, deciding whether we're gonna, for the next 30, 40, 50 years, haul that and then compete with regulation changes about hauling stabilized sludge versus having a predictable place to dispose of Class A locally. I think on the long term, it, it's better for the community in my opinion, but the capital, the front-end cost is more expensive and at, when we have 2% money fixed for doing this, that's more predictable for our rates in the long term also. Is that, is that a reasonable analysis of...
I, I believe it is and if I remember correctly, if we went with lime stabilized, we would have been having a truck a day or multiple trucks a day.
Yeah, multiple trucks a day.
For, for the life of the plant as we know it?
Yes, and it's really nasty stuff that would be leaving the plant versus a dry product.
And Boulder Park would have charged us more to take it, lime stabilized sludge is ugly.
Yeah.
Now, you're talking to a guy who's visually ugly.
This is a very difficult concept to sell to the public, even if we have Enviro Issues because it's the way we're handling solids. It's not a very attractive message or discussion and that's one of the real successes, I believe, in this plant, which adds a fair amount of money to this project.
Yes.
Anyway, nothing to add, commentary, so, thank you.
Any more questions?
See, if we start with a wet ton, do you just leave the drain plugs open on the truck to drive?
Well, you know, if you look at our facility, you see those centrifuges up on the second floor, which were the two or three quarters of a million dollars, that's how we get to a dry ton. So, that's one reason we put those centrifuges in, because they pace themselves very quickly.
And so, where is Boulder Park? I don't think I ever want to drive there. I just wonder where it's...
Eastern Mountains, you know, it's right along the Columbia Gorge. Yeah, it's, it's across the river from Hermiston.
Yeah, and, you know, this is, you gotta realize, we also eventually want to maybe get some of our own fields. This material is an agricultural product and it is a good, it is a mild fertilizer, it's not a strong fertilizer, but that's where I want to talk about the messaging right now, as we all think it's gonna be horrible stuff. Fact of the matter is, when we get out and get the message out, I think our demand's gonna exceed our production eventually. That's genuine, Class A solids is pretty soon people are wanting the material and so that's where I really want to message it and I want to get away from, yeah, this place, you know, fact is, Boulder Park is a very well-run agricultural facility that does a lot, you know, it's, the leaseback we're talking about is, they pay back what they, you pay for the equipment, but then you pay back, when they make the crop, you get some of that back. So, I, I do think we need, again, need to get away from that perception.
So, do you think the Chamber could message?
You guys aren't doing anything, right?
I can see the sign out there now, buy our crap.
We're gonna have to move this along. Thank you very much. We'll move from biosolids to the small cell deployment ordinance. See, our senior planner, Vince LeFever, coming up, so turn it over to you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before I start, I will make you a promise, I will not mention buffers.
You will not let?
Mention buffers.
We buffered you to death last night.
Yes, indeed. In fact, I will keep my presentation very short, this is not new ground to you folks. The background really quick is because of the increase in our mobile usage, everybody... The background really quick is because of the increase in our mobile usage, everybody has a cellphone, and we're carrying other mobile devices that require additional coverage. In addition to the state wanting to provide connectivity in more areas than are currently existing, the technology companies and telecommunications firms are coming up with a new technology called small cells. Essentially, that's exactly what they are, they're smaller scaled and are tall cell towers that we usually cite around town, difficulty. These small cells can be positioned on infrastructure that's already existing, such as light poles, telephone poles, even structures. The Washington State legislation was proposed last year to basically assist in dictating how small communities can regulate the citing of small cells. To preempt that type of state mandate, the City of Oak Harbor joined a consortium and worked with the law firm of Ogden, Murphy, and Wallace to come up with a couple of draft ordinances that help us basically put our fingerprints on what we want to see for regulations as far as process and design standards. We processed those as interim ordinances. The council approved both of those back in March. And what we're looking at now is moving those forward into a permanent status. We have followed the RCW requirements for interim, interim ordinance processing. We had the public hearing within sixty days of the adoption, which was April 17. We're continuing with that process in accordance with our municipal code requirements of 182270, where we'll have, we had a review with the planning commission back in May, we'll have the public hearing with the planning commission in August, and then present the final ordinances to you September 4th, which meets our six-month requirement for the interim status. There's no required action today, and your packet includes the interim ordinances with some minor revisions that staff is recommending. We also got some additional information from our attorneys that dealt with strand mounting, that section's in there as well. But essentially, those two ordinances are pretty much unchanged from the versions that you approved in March. And that's basically concluding my presentation. We'll be back for approval of the permanent ordinances, like I say, on September 4th. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions or concerns you may have.
It's not a question, I just want to say thank you, kudos to the staff, legal department, everyone hand, because we got in on the bottom where our city can make its own choices what fit our city and our area by doing this. And it was a rush, it was a lot of extra work, I realize that, but if we hadn't done it, we would be stuck. So it was a lot of vision and forethought to get in with the Ogden, Murphy, and we're not going to have a disaster, I don't believe, but thank you very much for stepping up to the plate and working faster to get this done, because we would have been left out. And that's kudos really to the whole staff of the city for pushing through for this. So thank you very much.
Counselor Henson.
I have a quick question about, let's see, section two, eleven dot oh seven dot oh two oh, implementation, and then down on item D, it's page thirty of our packet, three of ten on your agenda item. The director may approve, deny, or approve with conditions, all or any of the portions. Are those conditions specifically laid out, or was that left intentionally ambiguous so that it could be flexible?
It's a flexible opportunity for us to issue conditions on an application. When we had the term conditionally approved, that got confused with conditional use permit process, which involves a hearing, so that's why we cleaned that up.
That makes perfect sense, thank you.
Sure. Okay, anyone else? No other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
That did real quickly. We're making up time there. Making up time, and now we got the police team.
Modification to WAVE contract and processes and possible modification to lease options. Chief Dresser, welcome.
Hi, thank you. You guys always save me for last, I guess, what's up with that? But that's okay. I like that. I was hoping somebody'd come up with that, nice work. So I'm here to just kind of inform you of some research and some discussions that have taken place. Our animal control program, which has been in existence, I, I think everybody got this ahead of time, right? The eight-page pamphlet? So, sorry, I don't have a PowerPoint, I've been told I have to up my game, so the next presentation I will, it'll be an extensive, like fifty-page PowerPoint, just to let you know. So I've gone into the history of animal control with the Oak Harbor and looked at it as I'm looking at things. Really, I've been working on this since the end of last year, when Terry Sampson indicated his desire to retire, I started more in depth. And coincidentally, it also is going to coincide with a leasing option that is due up in May of 2019 for the facility we currently lease in Oak Harbor. So as I look at all the options available to us, I did get some statistics there that you can see on page two of your diagram that shows the decline in the number of cats and dogs that have been turned into a control facility, it's decreased dramatically as you've seen. I must skip through some of this, and I apologize, I didn't bring other handouts, staff, you can yell at me later. Our animal costs, so a little history on that, which you, some of you know better than I do. We used to contract with Terry Sampson to do everything, and that's for, for many years. There are storage of the animal, or holding of the animals occurred down at the Navy base, they had a facility down there. WAVE got involved with part of the, the system, and then in 2013, when the Navy decided to close that facility down there, an RFP was put out for, for that job of the holding the animals. WAVE won that contract, and since then, we've had that with them where they're doing all the holding. But we had to find a temporary facility, which is the one that we leased, started leasing here in Oak Harbor. And we leased that from a local, a local business, or businessman. And so that's kind of the history a little bit there. And we're at a point now where the lease is up, we've had, we've had communications from the holder of that, that they have a desire to sell that facility. Now, we have an option to purchase that facility written into the lease, I believe it's two-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand dollars is what's written in there. Something that's written on the bottom of page four of this, it's not on the original one, is the clause in that lease, there was a ten thousand dollars put down by Oak Harbor to maintain that option to purchase. If, if we don't purchase that building, I, I don't think we return, we get that money, but we'd have to look into how that works, and legal's been, legal has or is going to reach out to the leaseholder about our potential options. Basically, as I looked at moving forward and some of the options, we really have some choices, and the choices that I've narrowed it down to are in that pamphlet that you've, you've got. And I'm not asking you to make this choice today, I just want to let you know where I'm at, and maybe even talk about some, if a direction isn't something you want to entertain, we don't even discuss it. Kind of the options are, we're hiring the animal control officer to replace Terry, so that's going to be something that we're, we're in the process right now. We've got great candidates already identified, and we just got to make some selection here. We are going to lose that facility, and as we look at that, what do we want to do moving forward? I've been in communications with WAVE, and I looked at some other options, which you've seen in your pamphlet and your handout, you know, an all-in-one option, where I came from, we had Humane Society did all-in-one. Watcom County, Skagit County used to, they don't anymore, but those didn't pan out. So where we're kind of at now is maintaining somebody to do the sheltering, and WAVE is willing to do that. We've talked about a cost figure for WAVE, we've narrowed it down to where, what you see in the document, and, and what those costs would be for. So if you look on page four, and you look at the, or you can look on this single sheet that I've handed out, I kind of condensed them on there. If you look down at the bottom, the hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty, thirty-six is what we currently pay for WAVE costs and our leasing and our utilities on that leased facility, and some repair and maintenance on that, on that facility. Does not include the animal control officer, I pulled him out of all this, we, we're going to move forward with him, as he's not including those costs. The contract that we've tentatively looked at with WAVE, we've come to a tentative figure of fifty thousand dollars. The fifteen thousand you see in there is, here's the way it would work. Our animal control officer would take animals down to Coopville, to the WAVE facility down there, fifteen minutes away. That's where we would do the storage of our, of our dogs and cats. Cats would end up being back at Oak Harbor, they're moving into a new facility here in Oak Harbor for cats. And that's the way it would look. However, if we have an officer at, say, 2:00 AM, a police officer, who gets a call of a loose dog, that police officer gets a loose dog, we have to have somewhere to put him if I can't take him down to the WAVE facility in Coopville, because of staffing and, and different causes. So we've, I've been talking with a local veterinarian service who has some kennels available, who will allow us to use those if we enter into an agreement with them. So that's what the fifteen thousand reflects, is what I think our maximum number would be based on looking at data from animals that have been recovered in the evening hours over a few-year period for us. I think that's maximum, I think we'd be under that. There are some other potential options, including building a holding facility or two, a run somewhere on city property, could be under twenty thousand dollars or some, and there's another option I'm exploring, but it'd be the same or, or lower price. But we have to have that facility, that location, to be able to store an animal when an officer gets them in wee hours. And then in the daytime, when an ACO, the animal control officer comes in, they would get that animal, transport it down to Coopville, and, and start the sheltering of that animal. WAVE is, is amenable to this, this would be part of the contract, and if you haven't been down to the Coopville facility, I've been down there and toured it, as I've been discussing this with, with WAVE, and very nice facility. This was not available back when some decisions were made in the past, which I think is part of why those decisions were made. It is a very nice facility now, they have room for, for what we would provide, and they have expansion room in the future, should things move to a different direction. So if you take those costs that we currently paid in 2018, and if you took our leasing option and we were to maintain that, which we probably can't pass May, we'd still be continuing with those costs, okay? Because we'd still have to pay. WAVE's portion of that, right now in their contract, is about a hundred and four thousand, a hundred and five thousand dollars. Of that blue you see there, it's a hundred and forty-one. If we take the new contract price that we're looking at, along with the, the local facility to hold pets tentatively, that's about sixty-five thousand dollars plus or minus. So if we moved to that route, and we didn't keep the lease in the existing building, and we reworked our contract with WAVE, we would move down to about sixty-five thousand dollars as our, our animal fees for those, our annual fees for those services, which would mean a savings of around seventy to eighty thousand, dependent upon a lot of factors. And the other key point is here, we probably can't continue the lease even if we wanted to. According to the, the owner of the building, in May, we'll either have to purchase the building, or he'll terminate it and, and want to sell it to somebody else. At least that's the indication we're getting. And if we wanted to purchase the building, you can see the, the chart in the middle as our one-time cost next year as to what we'd have to come up with to make that purchase. And that's assuming around, actually, I'm sorry, yeah, on the top there, you see around sixty thousand in repairs, when I've talked to our public works, what we think we might have to do to bring it up to what we think would be where we need it. Proceeding after that, of course, we wouldn't have that, that middle graph cost, but what we would have is still that contract with WAVE that we currently have of a hundred and five thousand, instead of moving down to fifty thousand, because we have to staff that building, and WAVE is staffing that building, that's part of why we're paying that extra money. So if we want to maintain that building, we'll have to staff it, and that, that cost would stay the same. So if we were to do that, we'd be looking at around a hundred and five, a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty or so thousand dollars moving forward with building costs as such, if we purchased the building, and that's after the first year large costs that we paid. So that's kind of in a nutshell, some of that. You know, I've looked at other options, which I think you've read in your packet, just at this point in time, that's not what we're looking at. I want to throw in a couple of little pieces here. We currently contracted the Navy to provide animal controlled services in their housing area. I don't anticipate that being affected, we'd still provide that service, and, and so that would still be available. On page six of six, if you've read on the bottom there in a recommendation, you'd see some, a couple of changes I would recommend. One of them is the holding time that we have for, for animals, we don't have to make that change. I recommend it just because it's consistent with what they do for ICSO, they'd have, they'd have one consistent timeframe. What's the downside to this? You know, we don't have a facility right here in Oak Harbor. If somebody has an animal that, that they want to go get, they'll, they'll have to go to Coopville to get that animal, and fifteen minutes, I drove it today, fifteen minutes. And so they'd go down there, we'd provide, one of my suggestions is we allow the WAVE, if we move this direction, to collect the licensing fees, which they don't currently do. So somebody goes down there, it's kind of a one-stop type of a place. So that's the downside, or the potential downside, but it's a fifteen minutes, a very nice facility, if you have been there, I recommend you, you tour it, but it's kind of where we're at. So that's some of the directions I've kind of narrowed it down to, as I've been exploring a lot of options and communicating with the mayor. Open to questions?
So is your ACO going to be able to help do some other things too?
Yeah, so our ACO, what we've got, what we've done is rewritten a job description, and we've labeled that ACO position as a public service officer, or I'm sorry, police support officer. And their primary duty is animal control duties, education, enforcement, public outreach. What we'll have as a piece with this a little bit too is, if we don't have a facility here and people want contact about a pet, they'll either make a phone call, or they can communicate with our ACO. And if we have a pet in a temporary holding facility here for some reason overnight, over a weekend, the ACO would be dealing with it. That, if we use this private location, this, the, the service who has these runs available to us, business would not take place there. Business with the public would take place with our ACO. But the ACO, as a police support officer, we can call on that person also, if we have a, a scene, he can come help set up roadblocks at the scene. If we have some kind of downtown project we want to do, and we want some help with doing something, we'll be able to utilize that. The association was real good working with us on being able to use that person in other manners, as dependent upon workload. Their primary job is, is animal control, and all those things that go with that.
Counselor Henson.
I, this is pretty slick, by the way, I just want to say. I think that all of the recommendations are clear and, and well reasoned, and I really appreciate the amount of information that you took the time to dig up for us. So this is all good, on a sort of related topic. I do have a question about what we do in the interim while we're waiting for an ACO, and I've been meaning to ask you this. But I had someone ask me what happens when they call, they had found an animal and called ICOM and said somebody, but nobody ever showed up, and so they said, well, what do I do? And I, I knew that we didn't have an ACO at the time, but I didn't know what to tell them. So what should the public do while we're waiting for to hire someone?
Well, we hope to identify and get that ACO onboard, like with.
Like yesterday.
Like with, well, yeah. There's, there's some, some other factors that are interfering a tad bit with, with the selection. But we hope to get that person onboard pretty quick, but for the time that that ACO has not been here, our officers have been handling that job. And it's an extra duty for them, sometimes we run into things where they may not know, but we've got some people with education and an apartment who've helped out, you know, while, we've got resources with the Anna Cordis and the Island County ACOs who have helped out. In fact, they both sat on the board for our selection process to help us with, with some identification. So the, the officers have been handling it for the most part. There's some things like cats where they may not have dealt with it, but I even know two, three days ago, they picked up an animal at night, and they've took, taken them to the facility down there. You know, one of the questions about the facility is, you know, the lease goes up till May, if we, if we're not able to end that lease before then, what do we do? We'd honor the lease, but we would de-staff it, we would look at some options, which would still reduce our costs even until then, and then things would transfer in May to a different format. But we would look at an alteration before that, that would even save us money as we move forward.
That makes sense, and it sounds like we're pretty far along in the hiring process.
Yeah, it's, you know, what it's down to now is, is arranging the time for. Yeah, it's, you know, what it's down to now is, is arranging the time for what we call a chief's interview, where I can talk with the candidates. We've got a civil service list, and we've, and it's down to that, and doing the, and then making some selection.
That's great news.
Yeah.
That's good.
We've got some good candidates.
Good.
Thank you. Quick questions, would the new ACO officer still take, have access to, or use their own phone to do the Facebook posting that's been very popular and, and helpful to people who've lost their pets?
Yeah, you know, they would, and they could, I've talked with WAVE about that, I know when Terry left, there's, you know, a few call, or a few people commented about that, and, you know, it just is what it is. But I've talked to WAVE about that, and they do a page, and they're willing to help us with, with maintaining a page. So what I hope to do is mesh that and make, and they'll have a better format to be able to do that. And our ACO would be the one that would be the cat, or not the catalyst, but the one who would be the connection to work with them on that, because I know there was some popularity to it. And, but they, I think they've indicated a desire to, to work with us on that, and it might be a better solution. The other thing that we'll do is if we move that direction, is WAVE will, our officers, all of our officers will have a key or code for WAVE, our animal control officer definitely would. And so as far as taking animals down there and putting them in and that kind of stuff, WAVE has also indicated a potential desire to help us out on weekends, sometimes if they have somebody up here with, doing some transfers. So they've been very, they like the partnership, and they're well-established in the community, and so, you know, that's, that's worked out well for us, I think.
And one more question, the savings, because it's been coming out of your budget, then you could use this towards another position?
General.
General, oh, it's general fund, oh, okay. I thought if this money came out of his budget, he had to account for it out of this budget. Sorry.
Yeah, and we actually have an animal control budget from the general fund that it comes out of, so.
So it sounds like with WAVE, we've got a willing and capable partner along beside us with this, moving forward. It sounds like, too, that without purchasing this building, we're gonna save a lot of upfront money, maintenance costs, and things like that. It sounds like the only downside might be people, including the officer, and people retrieving their pets, might have to drive down to Coopville.
Correct, that's, that's the only thing I see, is that there's not, yeah, that's the only thing I see.
So my last question is, when you drove down to Coopville, and you made that drive in 15 minutes, did you have your lights and siren on?
I did, I was going 99.
I was gonna say, 15 minutes!
No, and I guess I'll refresh that, because it was 15 to Coopville, I, I think it's probably another three or four to get to the, to the animal control facility. If you drive legally, which you should, and I always do. Thank you for the question, though.
Hopefully, it sounds like only the dogs will be going down there, I don't know if the new WAVE facility is available yet, it's not available yet to receive cats, is it at the old Sears?
It's not, and that's something I still have to work out with WAVE, that was my thought initially, and then in talking to, and talking to them, they thought, well, we'd probably have a better process to bring the cats down here as an intake, and then move them to that facility up in Oak Harbor after that, if that's appropriate. I think I still have to work out that piece, my, my thought was just bringing them right to the facility here, so I, I think we still have to work that piece out. We've got an old, or an existing contract with WAVE that I've talked with their director and their, their managing staff about how we would modify that, so we, what we would do, if we're gonna move, if we're thinking we want to potentially move that direction, is look at, taking that contract and modifying it to work to our existing needs, if we move that direction. And that piece was, was one we still have to kind of iron out a little bit.
You know what, the reason I ask, you've got an average here, a five-year average of 296 intakes, so that's probably a trip a day. Bullitts?
Two hundred, what, what number?
You've got a five-year average of total pets in of 296, middle of page two, right above the graph.
Yes.
So if we admitted 296 animals on average over the last five years, that's not quite a trip a day.
Yeah, it varies, and I would anticipate each day our animal control officer would probably be running out there, it's just a matter, and that's part of the thing with the holding facility, too, is, you know, having that, that animal there, and then being able to run them out, you know, if we put them in a temporary holding facility, then our costs will, if we, if we utilize that a lot based on the current structure with what I've, the communications I've been, our prices will go up. So we'll avoid that as much as possible. My preference for cats is we take them right down to the local facility. It's easier, it's a little bundle of fur, although sometimes they're a lot bigger and a lot more angry. And this is not a, so that's my preference.
Appreciate the proactive work and creative thinking.
I just want to thank you also for providing options. You know, we're not working with this every day in your department, you guys are, but your thought process is presented to us on paper with options, and it makes it a lot easier to understand what you're going through, to get to a conclusion. Thanks.
So I, I think, Mayor, just to sum it up, at least from my perspective, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and pursue the suggested option, and figuring out all the details we would need to figure out, to then present to you guys as potential actionable items, if that works.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that concludes that part, so now we're to city council. You want to add anything? We might get out a little early.
I move that we adjourn.
I think we'll just adjourn.